Nate is Karen and Jessica. Rob and Lester will be coming later downstairs.
This is Rob.
This is Rob.
Rob, we can start now. We'll wait for you.
Sure.
All right, you've all had minutes. We have a motion to approve. Second? All those in favor?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, and I just, it really is just a matter of wording and misunderstanding what I actually said was on the discussion of one of the topics. So I would just like to make the point that my language correct. Okay? That's a way forward.
All right, so can we have them? We've got, I have more than a second, so Marion and Reagan there. So can we have, all those in favor? Pose. Any instructions?
No seconded.
And we have no adjustments to the agenda. Board chair report, I believe the only thing we have, or I have to report is that the first of April, we will have a chair and board chair nominations and consequently elections. So parents will not be running this fall, so she will be not nominable to chair. So we'll be needing a new chair, a constipated vice chair. So if that's something that anybody is interested in.
Is it the first or the eighth?
Well, it's the first of eight, the first meeting.
Okay.
Which is not the first. No, but it's. So if anybody's interested in that, if it's something that they think that they would be interested in doing and contemplating that, I'm sure Rick could counsel you through that.
Yeah, if you'd like to sit.
Can you say, can you do it?
That goes into, that goes into, yes.
I didn't look. Are there any citizens interested in addressing the board tonight? There's nobody signed up, anybody interested, they still may?
Right. Okay, so we got the person out, we have one nomination. If you reference your agenda notes, we have a grade two T King physician, Victoria Pushing, at the Smith School. Victoria actually has been doing a long-term sub position there recently. Her salary on a pro-rated basis of thirty-five, eight fifty-five. I'd ask for your endorsement of Victoria Pushing, grade two, future of Smith School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, where's Victoria? Victoria, congratulations, Victoria. Well done. Here's the nation, so we move to the superintendent school. Brittany said she'll be here in the upcoming proclamation, Olivia. You got it right there?
No, I do not.
You don't? Okay. We'll have, we'll have Mr. Holmes. He's on the, he's always on the on-deck circle there, so he'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
John, if you would please.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary to reach their potential as citizens who meet the challenges of a changing world society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, John. I have two log personnel requests, they're up. I've had none as of today at the end of the business day. Letter C, I included the update from the Maine School Board Association. There's a great deal of information in there. I don't want to read it to you if you have any questions or any comments you might want to talk about. I do want to congratulate Fay. Fay is representing our region on the Maine School Board Association position. I congratulate Fay. We've had the opportunity over the years to have represented there, and it's a very invaluable position for us. Also, I believe that Fay will thoroughly enjoy that. So Fay, you want to make any comments?
I have my first meeting Saturday, so I'll probably know a little bit better about what's going to happen, and I'm kind of excited about that position, to be honest with you. So I'm looking forward to it.
One, one of the aspects that I found very invaluable is what you bring to us with respect to pending legislation. Last time I knew there were like thirty-two hundred bills in education being submitted. So you can see there's a great deal of conversation with respect to education. So we'll look forward to that as well. We've actually had, not playing pressure on you, Fay, but we've actually had over my tenure here, we've had two people on this board be the president of those good ones. Well, you have to have that as a standard.
I, I, I can let that go. It's all right.
Kelly Bigmore was the one present, when Kelly was on the board for me. Okay, we have two ladies who are going to give us a presentation. I have Brittany, the name of our parent, our school nurses, and school health coordinator on the pandemic coronavirus update. So ladies, if you would please, thank you.
And Reagan, feel free to chime in at any time.
Nate, they need, okay, now we also have, Nate is going to present on board tonight. The one that we are, are telling her, is taking a presentation today in the podcast and that'll be available for people's home tour on YouTube. And Nate has had this one passed on to Hannah Hampton. We'll make sure we put down a locale, make sure that people home can hear us. So Brittany and Barb, if you would, thank you.
Excellent. So the way I'm going to do this, I'm going to do it similar to the Maine CDC and National CDC briefs that we have been very much listening to. We will give you some information and then give you an opportunity to ask questions. So first off, I wanted to just talk about the status of COVID-19. That is what we, you're hearing coronavirus and you're hearing COVID-19 in the media. We are using the term COVID-19 as it is the disease that is caused by the coronavirus. So currently, there are one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred cases worldwide. There have been four thousand, two hundred deaths worldwide. There are a thousand confirmed cases in the U.S. and thirty-one deaths in the U.S. I'm giving you this information just so you have it. I'm not up here to scare or intimidate at all with what this is. There are, as of noon time today, on the Maine CDC website, there are no confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the state of Maine. There are five in New Hampshire and ninety-two in Massachusetts. What, what we are looking at this with is the lens of public health. If you look at it as an individual, I am a young mother with two children, my husband and I are super healthy. We are feeling good, you know? We can weather the storm on this, but looking at my elderly relatives or my family members with comorbidities, I am worried about that. So we are presenting in a way of how to mitigate bringing that disease to that vulnerable population in the community. We have a responsibility to our community. So that's how this information will kind of be presented with the public, public health lens. So COVID-19 is a new disease that has come out of Wuhan, China. It is a disease that we have no immunity to. It is brand spanking new, so that we have no immunity, we have no vaccines, and there are no antivirals to treat it, unlike the flu, which we have vaccines and we have antivirals for. It spreads very quickly. It's in droplet, so if I coughed on Barb and I had COVID-19, sorry, she could get it too. It can be on surfaces. There is very little data about this because of the newness of it. Unfortunately, we don't know how long it stays on surface. You see, some people say two days, some people say nine. We don't really know that. So they have very limited information on it. We do have an idea that it doesn't seem to affect children as severely as it does adults over the age of sixty and people with comorbidities such as heart disease, diabetes, kidney disease. Children seem to do fine. They kind of get some sniffles, then they pass it to their friends, and then pass it to their grandparents like little kids do. And that's what makes it challenging for us. If you look at the symptoms of it, it's a fever. What temperature? Don't really know. It's a cough, okay? Shortness of breath, but that's actually kind of farther down on the list. So it looks like a typical elementary school. So that's what is challenging. I mean, really, I'm an elementary nurse, so that's, that's what's, what's challenging. So as we currently stand, again, I repeat, in the state of Maine, we have no confirmed cases of COVID-19. Are there cases being tested? I am sure. They do update that CDC website daily, and I'm constantly looking at it to see if there's anything. We will be notified if there are cases that come up. So what we're doing in the district, we are very much encouraging hand hygiene. I have the best-looking fingernails I have had since I got married because I am keeping my hands away from my face. I am a nervous chewer. We are encouraging hand hygiene four times a day. We have scheduled that at the elementary level. We are cough, etiquette coughing into your elbow. We are very much, very, very much encouraging people to stay home if they are ill, that is students and employees. I had an employee call today and ask questions, and I said, if you still are coughing and ill appearing, I want you to stay home. We are doing the very best we can to protect our employees and our community members and our kids by teaching them the best thing that we can do. We are doing standard cleaning right now. Again, because there are no cases, we are doing our standard routine and then cleaning high-touch surfaces, so doorknobs, railings, those types of things. We have purchased some equipment that'll assist us if this gets more intense in the area for cleaning whole rooms. We are asking people to be judicious with the amount of supplies they are using because supplies will be challenging for us to come across. Right now, we are sitting in pretty good shape, Reagan, as far as I know, around supplies. We continue to, we will continue to follow our pandemic plan. Our pandemic preparedness plan is in, has been activated. We have activated that for about two weeks, actually, though the World Health Organization declared it a pandemic this afternoon. We will continue to do that. Some of the language has changed. That originally came from the H1N1 influenza outbreak of 2006. We have changed some of the language that is in there, and we have found we have to continue to change that. So when I sent that out today, it's an evolving document because things are still unknown. Some of the letters, like if you look at our appendix, I don't, we don't want to send out letter two right now, it's not, it's not appropriate, but we need to do, we need to do some things. So we've modified that a little bit. We are communicating in a manner that is trying not to cause alarm in our community. We, again, have a responsibility for that, to not increase panic. So we have sent out two notifications to family members about hand hygiene and cough etiquette, acknowledging that COVID-19 is out there, acknowledging that it's in the media, but trying not to inflame it any more than it already is. We've sent out notification to our staff members about what we were doing, and we will continue to do that. We will be sending another letter out on Friday that is a little more detailed. We're kind of stepping it up a little bit. And then we're looking at having information on our website that people can access. We are using a team approach for our communication. Everything is vetted through Reagan, myself, Barb, and our nursing staff so that every building has the same information. That's very important so that it doesn't lead to confusion amongst, amongst building, amongst staff, and amongst parents. So we are really working hard to do that, and that is a very big ask on one person. So we want to be able to do that as a team, and Nate is going to be very helpful with our website so it, it looks good and it flows well. I'm going to hand this over to Barb so she can give me some other updates, if I can get it off.
I think you've said, I think Brittany said most of it. We are tracking students' symptoms right now and sending students home if they have fevers or if they have any of the other symptoms. We, and we don't need to report that tracking at this point. We may need to do that later on to the CDC. We're looking at field trips and canceling some field trips already, and we'll continue to look at field trips as time goes on. We've canceled things that are out of state, for instance. We will still look at more of those and look at, some of them are being canceled by other, like the Music Association just canceled one for this weekend in the state, and that's partially because judges came from other states to go to that. So we're going to continue to look at those things. As Brittany said, she and I are listening to the webinars constantly. We're monitoring the CDC website, and we will keep changing the documents. We're meeting with Reagan. If you've had a chance to look at our plan, we basically just want to know if you have any suggestions, any questions about that plan. It really has already been put into place, even though they just declared the pandemic today. I think that's everything. Does anyone have questions?
That's our brief.
Right.
So we will open it up to questions now, if you have any.
Yes.
Well, first, thank you for your presentation. I've been listening to XM twenty-one, which is now dedicated to coronavirus. The doctors, you know, they're basically saying, don't panic, but just use proper etiquette. I think you nailed that. Question about free reduced lunch or school lunch? If we get to a situation where schools are closed or whatnot, what will we do in that situation?
We're already discussing that, that we would have feeding stations, as we say, but not, hopefully that they wouldn't gather there.
Grab and get.
It would be, yeah. She, we've talked about a drive-through window that Brittany and I would man.
Well, she said that. So we are able to use our Smith School as, because it's a summer lunch program, and we could probably use Wagner because of our after-school program. So we have two sites available. Kathy is working on, Kathy Kittredge is working on a plan, and she emailed that to Reagan and I this afternoon about how she could staff that and looking at increasing her inventory so that can be done. That is something that, and we also got some waivers. So the state of Maine were given a waiver that the kids don't have to eat on-site, which is really helpful if we, you know, if school's not open. So they don't have to gather, they can take that home.
And we'd be reimbursed for the cost.
Yeah.
Other question, Marion?
Well, it's a broad curiosity question. So you mentioned comorbidity.
Yep.
In adults, but what about in children?
So there are no studies right now, unfortunately, because the sample size doesn't exist. Most of the information, because China now is on the kind of the upswing a little bit, is coming out of there, but we don't have a ton of it. So always with children with comorbidities, you err on the side of caution with them. And we've had conversations with parents, and we will continue to have those if there's those concerns. But we just, I had a, someone asked me about pregnancy, and I, there's just no data, unfortunately.
Okay. Two questions. Did you say, I know you've sent home information to parents regarding hand washing and those aspects.
Yes.
Is that considered what was your first letter in your appendix?
Yes, yes.
So letter one has gone out.
Yes.
And you said letter two is going out?
Friday.
Friday.
But it's modified because we don't, letter two is, if it's in Penobscot and Waldo County, we're not, we're not there, but it needs to have it increased.
So the second letter has all the current facts?
Right.
And what parents can do at home and what we hope they will do around school.
And the second question is, are custodians being trained to go to the next level of cleaning?
Yes.
So tomorrow at nine fifteen, I'll be in the office, and they've received in advance an agenda of what we are going to be discussing, plus a couple of resources for them to review already. And we'll be reviewing the use of the equipment that we've purchased for cleaning when we get to a level where we've experienced outbreak. And as they said right now, we're being very cautious about who does, who's affected and other supplies, so to do that's not necessarily great.
Thank you.
Other questions, our ladies? Ladies, thank you very much for your attention, your work on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just would want to commend the work. I think RSC twenty-two has had a relatively easier time of it in some districts because this pandemic preparedness plan was written years ago, and so it was just a matter of modification. And their familiarity with their own plan was so instructive to all of us who were needing to get guidance from it. So thank you very much to his work, Monty.
Our two students are going to present later the survey, but ladies, do you have anything to add at this time? Olivia, Sarah?
Well, I know that Olivia and I did attend a diversity forum earlier, and that was a really great, totally on a different note, but that was a really great opportunity. I think it opened up the discussion and allowed us to talk with other students about things like bullying and how students' voices are heard in the school. And we're looking into having more meetings like that. There was a lady who came up, and her name escapes me right now, but she's from Portland, and, you know, her job is to facilitate these meetings, and that was, I really enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, no, I did too. And afterwards, some of the students and I were talking, and we were talking about how we wish it lasted longer because we're like, oh, I have so many things to say, like, because it's only thirty minutes at the end of the day. And we really want to, like, have it happen more except for, like, scheduling and everything, but we definitely want to find a way to do that, like us too with, like, the school and HA, and kind of be able to do that and present these issues to the board if we can.
Okay, like, we'll hear more of you later. Sarah, Olivia, where was that meeting and what was the, who was the audience? Was it all students?
Yeah, so it was a few selected students who had expressed interest in sort of advocacy and leadership in the, in the school. Mr. Tracy reached out to a few students. There were around less than ten of us there, and it was just down in the office, the main office, in one of those conference rooms. Yep.
So I can add some to this. These were student focus groups that happened at both of our middle schools and also at the high school, and it's related to the work that we've been doing with the Equity and Education Committee. And the person that reached out with us, Mary Gerard, attended all of the sessions with Deb Egnell, who is a student facilitator. And I think that we found in this that the students had the reaction that these ladies are telling you, just wanted to know more, they have so much to share, and we will be moving forward to have other opportunities for students.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear, we'll hear later in the agenda from our two girls. Reagan, your report.
So you'll find a few things in your folders related to my report. First of all, I'd like to let you know that the budget development is in full swing, and we have now covered several articles. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, for Articles Six and Seven, which is system and school administration.
If you haven't been to the meetings, you're missing out.
That's for sure.
That's true.
I wanted to let everyone know that our building committee will be meeting at the end of the week. We are going to start mapping out the pathway that we'll start to take regarding the Wetherby McGraw project. That means evaluating what community will is around such a project. What is the need? What are our goals? Where are we on the state list? What is the likelihood of additional money? All of those things. So out of the building committee will come more information, but I want you to know that's happening. The Wagner, Wagner Roofing Project will be a considerable project, and our bids came in successfully, and we've moved to find the contractor. So June and July will be a substantial project on Wagner School.
And that's being paid by?
That's our cap, out of our cap, our reserve fund. As you've heard already, we will be meeting with head custodians tomorrow to review cleaning protocols at multiple levels of any type of an outbreak if that occurs here. We have purchased handheld electrostatic sprayers, and I do have a sample. I'll just send it around if you want to read the description of how these work. But the high school has already had one for some time, and we've purchased additional to use at elementary level. And these will come out when and if we need them. The Equity and Education Committee, we did have the student experience that was already spoken of. We also are developing staff experience for April seventeenth next month, and that is coming along quite well. We also are looking ahead to having an audit in our communities, all four of our communities to measure what are experiences of student, community members, our parents, families in general, and then issue-based auditing around what is of concern in our community and what do we need to do more and better work on. So we have been interviewing candidates for that, and when I have more information, I'll be coming back to you and let you know where we're at. We have our new RSC twenty-two website up, and our app is coming soon. Community Relations has been working on this, but I'm sure you've seen the new look, and we continue to refine and determine what will be there. We thank Nate very much, he does a lot of work. Link twenty-two came into your mailboxes, we hope, and I hope that you enjoyed reading this edition. I think there was a lot of wonderful activity and a lot accomplished by our students, of course. And let's let you know that the assistant superintendent transition has started as of March. Tina Boone is spending one day a week in our district. Sometimes it's a whole day, sometimes it's split into parts, but she's been attending our leadership meetings on Tuesdays, and that's been a great addition to start the transition along. Also, in your folder, you'll see the finance report. Typically, we wait till the second meeting of the month, but since you haven't seen one for a while, I just wanted you to have your eyes on it. We have thirty percent of the fiscal year remaining, and we have twenty-seven percent of the student and staff year remaining. So we're tracking very well at thirty-five percent of our budget. I can't say to you that I have any concerns at this time about how our budget's working for us. I think we've done a nice job at targeting what we needed and spending it well. Any questions on that? And then the last handout you have in your folders related to what I'm going to speak to are the field trip lists. I wanted you to be able to have just a chart that gives you a bird's eye look at what types of field trips are on the table. As Barb explained earlier tonight, we're going to be putting an end to out-of-state travel. Certainly, if there are trips that are way in advance, we're going to let them be there, and we'll consider things as we have more to come in Maine. But for now, with no spaces in Maine, we're trying to make day-to-day decisions based on the guidance the CDC provides us as they learn more, they tell us more. And first, we have a couple of trips that are going out this weekend in Maine, and we are right now saying yes, but everybody knows, you could fear any moment. I do also want to say, we have Skills USA scheduled for Handen Academy next weekend. That is a huge event, and those of you who have been familiar with it, I know Ellen speaks of it every year. It's tremendous out of UTC. That's going to be a heartbreaker if we have to make a decision on that. I mean, that means the world to these students who compete. And so we're trying to have an open mind. I just want the board to know, it's not that we're ignoring it. We're trying to say yes until we have to say no.
Okay. Nate, please. So questions of board members? John?
Have we been in contact with, or has the DOE reached out to districts about what will happen to instruction days or if government doesn't help, like, cancel schools or multiple days?
Sure, I attended a briefing on Friday in Augusta, and the DOE attended with multiple members and offered us limited guidance about what they would actually expect of us, and also relaxing some of the penalties that have existed in the past for how you serve up online school for snow day, for instance. So I think they're being very workable for us. We have started the discussion in house about what different online looks could be, and we'll be meeting more this week to try to determine that. And I've asked that we start to investigate the places in the United States that have already had schools shut down and look at what they're facing. You know, they might have thought they were going to go one way, and then once you do it, you realize, hmm, there's something I learned. We also need to think about the age of our students and which students it will be appropriate to ask for online learning experiences, and which students we might say we would prioritize different learning experience, like books being sent home and so forth. So we're in the works, and DOE is putting out guidance as they are developing it and hear from other schools. They've also created a portal for us to share with each other as districts, so they're making it pretty convenient.
Reagan, I talked about that a little bit today, John, and I was probably showing my cynicism, but it is a reality. So the questions I posed is, you know, how do we have the children at UTC replicate their experience? We have about a hundred and fifty, plus minus, who go to UTC. So how do those students experience that if they are not on campus? Those children have an IEP in their education plan, how do we adhere to that? So I guess my point is, I don't want to give the board the impression that we have the answer to that. This is a very, a couple of superintendents called me today, given my tenure, they said, have you ever experienced something like this before, this magnitude? And I said, no, I can't remember anything. We're, we're trying to plan the perfect plan for every single child. And I said, no, I can't remember anything. We're, we're trying to plan the perfect plan for every single child to deliver education. And uh hopefully it won't occur, but I guess I just wanna say at the outset, we'll have, we'll have a lot of conversation after tonight. But it's gonna be a very complicated equation to put together. For example, again, my opinion, kindergarten child in the fifth grade. And Mr. Tracy and I were talking about that today. If you take that group of children versus those kids at the high school, different, different uh group. Last time I knew and I could be off a little bit, but about fifteen percent of our homes don't have internet. So how do you meet that? So there's a lot of complications there, but if it happens, I hope that we're ready to do the best we can do. Good question.
Just a comment, I guess. I know in budget we talked about, I mean, funding are necessary for added technology, iPads or, or whatever. It seems like we're in pretty good shape for that in general, but uh you bring up a good point. Are there things for homes that may not have good internet access or internet access at all that they can at least download, get what they need and then work remotely and inversely instead of just giving, you know, assignments where kids work sort of in a vacuum? Do we use uh Google Meet or other sessions where, let's say, students could, you know, send a, a group collective set of questions? And then at a certain time of the day or time of the class, they might actually, you know, tele, tele-broadcast or something. So they're still seeing or hearing from the teacher?
The other thing as you're talking, I think I'll, I'm just pointing out opportunities. Is there any way that kids don't have access could come to this facility? Not having eight hundred and fifteen children here, but what about five or ten or fifteen? Is that a possibility as well?
Actually, I do have one easy solution that the teachers could use to reach all students. It's called Snapchat. I believe that every child above the age of four uses it and you can do little eleven-second sound bites and you'd reach everyone. It would be very easy.
We'll call your, we'll call your.
Pretty sure I've seen it use every day at our house, so.
What I would like to do is just ask out in the audience of administration, you know, what are some ideas that may have been in your, in your discussions already?
I'll talk a little bit about Google Meet. Uh, we are an education facility, so we get that tool for free.
Free.
Um, so it's a matter of training and usually hangouts.
Hangouts, yeah.
So some of our staff are familiar. It's changed a little bit. Um, it can support as many as a hundred users at any given time. Wouldn't like to see it, but it can do it. Um, you can record sessions. So if we use Google platform as, platform as our, our learning management system, we could record these uh teaching lessons or whatever and then throw them up there for students who couldn't watch at that time to watch later. But um so that, I think the tech is there, but we also need to be, are missing out the tech skills of our staff too to use this and we, and to train them on how to do that, so. And I'm gonna share some of that with our council next week. Okay?
The Curriculum Leaders Association for the whole state are getting together. We've created a form and people are putting in low-tech ideas of things and we'll have spreadsheets of different ideas for pre-K and by grade level up. So I'm not sure what that's gonna look like, but um everybody's trying to help each other around the state.
And you know?
I think we have access to some online platforms as well. You know, certainly Google Classroom is a great vehicle, but we do have I X on some other things that we pay for that could be specific to the skills that we can monitor. Uh, so I think that that gives us some opportunities as well if we need, need it to be virtual. But certainly, as Mr. Williams said, kindergarten versus an older student, I think we have to be really mindful that it's different levels or IEP or not, just developmentally. Uh, so we plan to have another conversation here, but we do have some, some good infrastructure in place that would be familiar with students, that they could continue to practice, honestly, continuing to read.
Read, read, read.
Write, write, write. And you know, like, with some of that practice, I, I think it would be pared down. It would be uh what your daily, daily classroom would look like, but I think we could have some staples there that could help us.
Great.
Sarah?
Yeah, so um, I'm sorry. Um, I would just like to recommend that the law enforcement portion of the, your report just be once a month. It doesn't need to be every agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and could you include, I keep asking, but if you could include just a report on the truance from month to month?
Yes.
Number of truance, um and the number of referrals to the SRO officer. That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim? Rick, following up on that fifty percent number, is that an estimate or do you have a, kind of a list of all the students that do not have internet?
We did a certain amount that I'll have Nate.
That is an estimate and it's going off of all the data.
Yeah.
We did a survey.
Yeah.
Uh, four, maybe five years ago and that was right around the sweet spot, fifteen to twenty percent and not all. It didn't get a hundred percent completion, so not everybody took it, but the number was pretty high, you know.
Didn't, didn't we just get some localized internet? I know Herman or it was part of you or is it Red?
Yeah.
Something.
Herman's had something like that for years.
Yeah, but I know that they just expanded.
Herman's Public WiFi?
Recently. I know, I know Herman's, but they're, they're.
It was Red Zone.
Red Zone just added a few more. There's just a, an article where they added a couple more communities. I don't know if it hit any in the district.
It was everywhere but my house.
That's universal right there.
I just have one more. I wanna say thank you to whoever revised to this reporting form. It is so much more helpful. Um, addresses the issue of which number suspension it is, which type of suspension, state category. It's one.
Mr. Raymond, did you do that or did Cindy?
Uh, it was mostly Cindy Carlisle, Jeanette Evans, and then myself.
Thank you.
It's wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, committee reports. Finance Committee? Jim, you have a committee? Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about something important, Rob. Finance Committee meeting, didn't have one last uh month. I didn't think it was necessary because spending is on hard. But the next one is scheduled for next Friday, nine AM at the district office.
When you say next Friday, do you mean the day after tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
I didn't say this Friday, I said next Friday.
All right, good, all right. We're on the same page.
Rob, you got a budget?
We had a meeting last night. We covered Articles One and Two. Uh, Reagan, can you refresh the other, well, the other sections that we've covered uh since?
Four, nine, ten, eleven.
Right, and not all in numerical order, so. Uh, minutes actually are available on the school website, including, I believe, the first or second meeting that has uh the historical uh reference, if you will, to last year's entire budget session, which has really been a great cross-reference to compare the discussions from last year to this year and to see how things are shifting or changing, where we're mostly expenditure-based and we do have, we did have some updates. Do you wanna share the, the updated ED two seventy-nine, the, the state funding uh numbers?
So uh this year we have received about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand in new money, a total of dedication of UPS twenty-nine million. Um, of course, there's local required share on that, so about nine million. And we're feeling quite positive because uh we did receive increased money this year again for being a part of the Educational Service Center. So that was a good thing. And also the funding is back for um system administration. Last year that was gone from the budget, so that's coming back online and that has helped us as well.
And if I, if I recall, the, the local share went up by about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, but the state funding went up by about seven fifty-eight. So it's uh almost the opposite that we had from two years ago where the local share went up quite dramatically, so.
Moving target.
Moving target.
Our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, at four thirty. Twenty-fourth, four thirty, right there.
Um, and Athletic, uh, we met last month. Um, the minutes are in here, the packet. Lacrosse is off, I believe this week they started some practices, so they're up and running for the club lacrosse. And uh the only, the uh, tonight we met for the first time with our Hall of Fame committee. Um, we actually formed that committee in our meeting. Uh, we met tonight for the first time. We'll meet again in April. Uh, I think I, have I, I'll send out the uh edits that we made to our bylaws and uh the folks that are on that committee to you in the next week or so. Um, we're gonna meet next month with David Underback from Brewer. Our bylaws are about six pages. His are thirty-five, so he probably knows a few more things about it than we do, so we're gonna talk with him a little bit. Building Committee?
We met briefly just to open bids for the Wagner project. I don't, I don't remember all of them. There were four bidders.
Yes, um.
Hamel got it.
Right.
Move Systems of Maine.
That's right.
GR Roofing, GME.
It was quite a spread. Some of them were over a hundred thousand dollars more than that.
The Hamel?
The Hamel.
Uh, negotiations?
We have been moving along in negotiations. We uh, is it last week, Alan? You done? I was thinking our next meeting is seventeen. Yeah. So that process is moving on. We've also established our first meeting in April. Is it in April? In April, we'll start the negotiation of what we call our educational support personnel, custodians, educational technicians. So we have two negotiators running parallel.
Education?
Yes, we met just before this meeting and we looked at um state data again, but we dug a little deeper this time. So we could see some subgroups and how they, how they played out in the whole thing. And Mary and I were chatting and I think that it would be a ti- an awful lot to give to everyone, so we're gonna look for some trends. And then Mary will report out on um the trends in the next month or so. We started on local data today and we, I think we were given a packet that we're gonna kind of look at and see if there are some questions that we wanna follow up with that for our next meeting. It's been data, data, data.
Policy?
Hi, we met last night. Um, minutes are in the, are in our folder and we'll have three for second meeting in two weeks and one for today.
Alan, DC?
Yeah, they met last month and it was a meeting just to go over the, I don't know if they call them two seventy-nines or not, that they received a funding advocate. But nothing's fixed yet. Like, we haven't, they haven't scheduled a meeting for this month because the state still hasn't finalized, don't have any receiving. I think we're supposed to get a fifteen percent increase, then the rumor was, they were gonna lift the cap entirely and refund everything to what it was supposed to get. And then, then they got the rumor that they're cutting it back to five percent this year.
Behave, Maria?
Drop-out prevention committee met last Thursday. Um, you will have minutes to that shortly. Um, so we're continuing to go through a process of just learning what's in place in the district right now for drop-out prevention. Um, we looked at the ESSA results, um, came up to speed on where the district is, um, pretty much in achievement and progress. And um we also looked at the um current quarterly reports for truancy and the categories that we're monitoring as a committee. So it's a important progress. We will meet again in June, uh, because we meet quarterly.
Uh, nobody, is anybody going to the Education Foundation?
No.
So once again, anybody that says interested? Spruce Board?
Yeah, I went to the meeting. There's a, the minutes are in the court packet. Um, it's a pretty well-oiled machine, let's put it that way. I was rather impressed with what they provide and um the budget was very clearly put out. Um, they answered a lot. In case you don't know, I ask a lot of questions and I ask a lot of questions and so um I really feel that they have a lot to offer our students and I was really pleased with that, so.
Community Relations?
We met on February twenty-sixth and uh minutes are in the electronic package. Um, the, the highlight was that the app is, is getting ready to, to be um up and running when about month eight. So we're looking at it sometime um very soon and uh and we'll probably have a roll out for that once it, it um is ready to go. We talked about the diversity initiative and um and just where we're at with that. In addition, uh, community engagement, our finalizing, inviting the communities to join us, uh, towns and their councils to come attend our meetings for Community Relations and developed uh some future agenda items to let the public know about some uh improvement projects that are taking place in the, in the spring. Our next meeting is March twenty-fourth after the budget meeting.
So, old business.
All right, so just one minute for us to get this cut out here. Do you mind if I cast directly from?
Well, they're setting up, I didn't ask, uh, I shared with Lester the recording of the Gaz.
Yes.
Event on video and thank you for setting that up on such short notice as well as I do understand from Mr. Reese they always record the audio and that the audio recording is quite uh nice. It's a high-quality equipment. So there's two options, there's the audio as well as the, the video that we can hopefully make available to the grandparents and others that decided to stay here tonight and they work, uh, in the foodie work, uh, cold and blue season.
And that, and I had that, I did post that to the page.
Oh, thank you. I'm gonna have this here and I'm gonna go through. I'm sorry, I'm gonna be yourself, but you were down there and I can't. Sorry. I couldn't leave any of the issues on there. Coming through straight to the. Yeah, yeah, I just, I don't want my whole screen. There we go. Oh, okay. Yeah, and I'll be changing slides here too, so it should be fine. Yep, there we go. Oh, I should've changed the timer. Can you like, let's give it or? Yep, I'll present it. Uh-oh. It's wanting to cast. Yep, um, here it is. When I click present, it's wanting to cast. Oh, thank you. Yeah, just hold on. All right, so sorry about the wait. Um, here's the much awaited um twenty nineteen slash twenty twenty student survey. And um just a quick overview of this. We sent it out in January and it was released to all the students, all four grades. And we asked eleven questions and I'll try to keep this concise. Um, so, yeah, and some of them were Olivia's questions and some of them were my own and we got some input from Mr. Tracy and a few of those were his. So the first question we asked uh is pretty straightforward. We asked what middle school? We asked, what middle school do you attend? And this sort of is a, um, a leading question to our next part of the survey. Um, and I basically wanted to see where our respondents were coming from. And I'd like to say that, um, we did receive, um, over four hundred and fifty responses, which is really amazing. Last year, Lucas and I sent out a similar survey and we received around two hundred to three hundred responses. So that was a, that was a really big leap and I think that also was thanks to Mr. Tracy's announcement. We did this, um, during advisory or mo-most students did this during advisory. So, um, you can see this pie chart, um, on the right-hand side and it, uh, gives an overview of where our respondents are coming from. Sixty percent were from Reeds Brook, um, around twenty-five percent were from Wagner. And I included that, um, yellow, you can see there, um, there were recurring, um, responses that indicated that students had spent a combination of time at Reeds Brook and Wagner. And I decided to include that because that did comprise almost fourteen percent of the responses to this question. And just over one percent, um, were from other schools. So that is an overview and that is not entirely representative of everybody at Hemden Academy, just who responded. I think it's generally there, but, um, yes. So the. So question number two, um, and this is where question number one comes into this. Uh, I talk about it in the next slide, I sort of break down between the two schools. But this is a broad summary of the data. And the question was, do you feel your middle school experience prepared you for high school? And obviously this question is very subjective. It's an opinionated question, um, and so the statistics regarding this are statistics on opinions. Um, just keep that in mind. And looking back on this, um, I think for a lot of these questions, I probably would have preferred to put a one to five scale because there's a lot of gray area between feeling completely prepared and not feeling prepared at all. So I had that third option, feeling somewhat prepared. Would have liked to include a few more, so maybe next year when Olivia does that, um, with the other representative, um, they might do that. So, um, generally I took the, uh, feeling somewhat prepared in the, in the red there as positive feedback. Um, especially for this question where it's, um, a lot to ask to be, feel completely prepared for high school. But anyways, um, three, I, um, for this one, I took into account students that went to Reeds Brook and Wagner and I did not include the ones who had went to both because that complicated the data, but, and, and the one percent that went to other schools. So of those students, that was three hundred and eighty-four responses. And, um, the stats on this is that twenty percent responded saying they did not feel prepared for high school at all. Forty-three percent said they felt somewhat prepared and the remaining thirty-seven percent felt they, uh, were prepared, um, completely. And, um, personally, I find these stats to be pretty reassuring. Around eighty percent of students feel, um, generally prepared for high school. And again, I would have liked to put a few more, um, you know, brackets in there so people could, you know, it's kind of easy when you're answering a survey just to put your answer in the middle because you don't feel completely, uh, in agreement with either or. So, um, these are the overall stats. And breaking it down into the two schools on our next slide, I wanted to address something that I've been interested in, especially as a representative on the board, um, and throughout my high school career. I've heard, uh, some feedback from my peers who went to Wagner, feeling that they were not quite as prepared for high school as their peers who went to Reeds Brook. And that's something that I really wanted, uh, the board to maybe move some attention to and s-to focus some effort into why that's the case. I received, uh, some feedback from my peers saying that part of this, um, the reason is that Wagner is located outside our general campus here and it's a, it's a pretty intimidating concept, a pretty, um, intimidating transition from middle school to high school, especially from Wagner, which is the smaller of the two schools, to a very large high school on a campus where all the other schools are included besides Wagner. So on this next slide, I have some, oh, change here, um, some pretty staggering, um, statistics on this. About, um, you can see in the red is the somewhat, um, prepared. The blue is did not feel prepared and the yellow is felt complete, completely prepared. And I have separated this into two pie charts. The top one is Reeds Brook and the bottom is Wagner. Um, and compared to eleven percent of students from Reeds Brook who felt they did not feel prepared, um, around forty percent of the respondents who were from Wagner said they did not feel prepared. And that's something that I really think the board should, uh, focus some attention to. I think it's, it's a really important, um, part of our district. Uh, so overall, I, I did not want to see these, but, um, I expected something, um, akin to this in this survey and that's why I included this question. Yes, so this, um, question, question three, um, Olivia's going to talk about this.
So this is, um, this question asks, do you feel your, that your education at Hemden Academy at this point has adequately prepared you for life after high school? Um, so we had felt prepared, felt somewhat prepared and did not feel prepared. Uh, so the somewhat is what people gravitated more towards, which is what I would have put because you don't really know what is life after high school. We're not really like, we're just like, we're just like, just it's so general that like, some words is kind of like, I think so. Um, but, uh, so twenty-four point seven percent felt well-prepared and fifty-seven point three felt somewhat prepared. So I think that's like, that's pretty good compared to like eighteen who completely do not feel prepared after high school.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I'm curious, that question was asked of all the students.
Yes, that was something, yep.
Does the survey page indicate what grade they're in or not?
Um, well, it does. In our emails, we have, um, the year we graduate at the beginning of the email. Um, and, you know, I would have liked to separate it into grades. It's just there was no convenient way for me to do that after I'd gotten this. Um, and that might've been something that I, that I should've put at the beginning. But that's, that's a really good, um, point there and it definitely would change compared to a freshman feeling prepared for life after. Yeah, yes, exactly.
We decided to keep this survey anonymous, um, because from personal experience, we feel that like sometimes if the survey, like, you have to write your name on it, like it has your email stamp, that you kind of feel like you aren't going to tell, you're going to be like, oh, I, like you kind of go in favor of who's making the survey. So I feel like, um, and it also showed later in the survey, um, that keeping it anonymous really like got students to bring up and like speak, like.
Additional comments, yeah.
There's a lot of them, yeah. And I think that because it was anonymous, students felt like that they would be heard without being identified. And so that's why there's no grade levels shown.
Okay. So question four, um, do you feel that your voice at, um, Hemden Academy is heard as a student? And, um, again, this is one of those questions where I should've added more in the middle, but we're going to go off this. And around fifty-four percent of the students who responded felt that their voice was somewhat heard. And, um, that's in combination with around twenty-five, twenty-six percent who felt like their voice was completely heard, very, very much so heard. Um, and this is something that we can address as student representatives because that's our job and that's our role here, um, to present student comments and feedback to the board. And this is something that we might look into for that, um, comment suggestion box on the website, which I have been thinking about and Olivia and I have been asking students about. So, um, yes, that's question four.
So, yeah, so this is my question. Um, ever since I was elected on the board, I was always wanting like, uh, to hand an activism group. I know like there's a Bangor area activism group and I know that there's like a civil rights team, I believe, right now. Um, but I was really wanting to like either have a group or create a group that will kind of encompass like anything you wanted to talk about, whether it be like just school-related or environment, like environmental issues and stuff like that. I know we've had, um, like walkouts and like, I think it was like a climate, um, presentation up here in the past and I thought that would be really cool to have those, um, kind of like, as like a group where students can like voice, like, be like, oh, I hear that like this is going on and I would really like Hemden Academy to like show their support in this way. And I want it to be like a student-run group and so I asked them if they'd be interested. Um, and of the total responses, uh, fifty-seven percent of the students were interest, oh, fifty-four students were interested. Um, and a hundred and sixty students said maybe, but I think that like, that's pretty good numbers because if we even get like a small group of like five people, hopefully the maybes will kind of join in. And I've been asking people around verbally and in person, they've seemed really interested. And of those people who said that their voice wasn't heard, I think this is going to give them a good opportunity to kind of get their opinion and voice out, so, yeah.
So our sixth question, um, was also in regards to that group.
Yeah, um, so out of like the three hundred and forty responses, a lot of, um, topics that were mentioned, this was like a fill-in-the-blank answer, so you could write anything. Um, the main topics were like bullying and discipline, uh, student care, um, your voice as a student, environmental and climate issues, mental health awareness and support, that one was a big one. LGBTQ rights and awareness and like possibility of new forms of like technology. Those were kind of like the reoccurring themes that were just worded differently that students felt they wanted to talk about a little bit more and bring up in more of like a public way.
What do you think, what was your intention with the student care? What, what, what was, what did that mean?
So there were so many different responses and they were all worded so differently. So I tried to group them, a lot, some of them were, um, asking for support on homework load. Some of them were asking for support on how to make their schedules. Um, some students commented that there, they didn't know about all the classes that were offered. They're like, I didn't know this existed until like I was a twelfth grader and I kind of wish I knew about it more. I wish there was a place where I could get tutor during study hall. Even like, I think that that is offered, they were just kind of, they really wanted to know if like that was, like, they'd be able to do that.
Okay, so our seventh question, um, was one that Olivia and I were interested in and so was Mr. Tracy. And it's how do you decide on what electives to take? And this was a, the results to this question were really reassuring. I'm sorry about the chart, it's a little small, but the red is, um, sorry, the blue is I take whatever fits my schedule. The red is I take electives that I'm interested in and the yellow is I haven't been able to take many electives because of the required courses that fill my schedule. And, um, so the results to this, again, were really reassuring. Um, seventy-seven percent of students responded that they take electives that they're interested in. And this shows that Hemden Cat Academy offers courses that are both interesting and allows students to have enough time in their schedules to take these courses, which is very important. And I know this is a really compelling, um, trait of schools for tuition students when they're looking at schools. And, um, yeah, it really prepares students for life after high school, depending on what they, they would like to major in, what career they'd like to go into. And Hemden Academy really offers a lot of great electives. So, yes, that was the seventh question. And the eighth one was, what recommendations would you make so that advisory might better serve the needs of students? And for those of you who don't know, um, at Hemden Academy, we have an advisory period that lasts around, um, twenty minutes and then we have long advisories that are around forty minutes and they happen every Wednesday, um, in the mornings. And this is a, like a, a multi-purpose block of time and not a lot of schools have this. They have home rooms or something like that. We have advisory. And I've heard from a lot of students that this time period could be used, um, more effectively. Sometimes we sit around for a little bit and, um, sometimes what we talk about is not necessarily what we'd like to learn. So I, um, put a few options here and I also allowed an open comment section where students could, um, put like what they would like to learn, um, if it wasn't one of the, um, already pre-selected options. And I allowed this question so that students could select more than one answer. And I'm sorry about the format, on the top there, it was, um, a little skewed, but hopefully you can read it. The first one is budget and financial planning and the second one is life skills. And so life skills was the most popular response to this question. We got three hundred and fifty-four students selecting this as one of their, um, options. And this includes, this is a very, um, large umbrella term and it includes, um, simple skills that adults, you, everybody here might take for granted, you know, that you already know how to do, but as students, um, were a little unsure about. So they include, you know, buying or renting a car, doing taxes, learning skills for interviews, um, applying for jobs, applying for college, writing a check and, um, just other things like that. Um, so students also indicated that budget and financial planning were, uh, something they'd be interested in learning about. And, um, you can see that two hundred and twenty-five students selected that as their response, as, or as one of their responses. And that's followed by announcements and upcoming events. Um, I think that advisory could really serve as a, um, mode of communication between the board, um, between teachers and, um, faculty and students and really getting those announcements out there. Um, yeah, so a hundred and fifty-one students indicated that that would be something they'd be interested in, followed by grade checks, which is something we already do, uh, once a quarter, I believe.
Okay, so the next question is, any classes that aren't being offered at Hemden Academy that you would like to see? This is again a fill-in-the-blank answer, so there were multiple, multiple different things that were, um, mentioned. But in order of demand, budget and financing skills, again, life skills. I think if you go through the survey answers, any place that they could add additional comments or any like suggestions, a lot of, um, kids repeated life skills and budget and financing, I think just to like reinforce how much they think that would be really beneficial to them. A lot of, um, students showed interest in American Sign Language, a bunch of other languages are mentioned as well. Um, home economics and digital design for all grades. A lot of freshmen and sophomores were interested in taking that, not just as juniors and seniors. And then this question asked about any other extracurricular clubs. Um, a lot of students would like to see like a student-run school newspaper, a boys volleyball team, that one was very popular. J R O T C, debate team, A S L, life skills, boxing and wrestling. So very different, very different clubs.
Hemden Academy has, um, like an open forum where a student, um, all they have to do to start a club is find a teacher that will supervise that club, um, and sort of get the ball rolling on that. But we thought we'd include this because it's something that we were very interested in hearing about. And maybe it would be, uh, a good idea for us to express to students that if they are interested in starting a club, um, how to go about that and, um, how, how to make that happen. So the last question was an open, um, any additional comments question. And I included a few that I thought were important and that sort of summarized some reoccurring comments, um, in this part of the survey. So the first one was about how much students appreciate the surveys. And, um, as you can see, this person said that they love the surveys and it helped, uh, student voices be heard and so that changes can be made. And that was really reassuring and Olivia and I, um, you know, really appreciated these comments and there were, um, a few of those. And, uh, the next one, um, I decided to include this because there are some reoccurring, um, topics that students bring up in these surveys. And the R O T C was something that was in Lucas and I's survey, um, that occurred as a bunch of responses, as well as A S L. And I thought I'd include these because they do seem to be something that keep, that keep coming up. Yep.
Can you just give me a rough idea as to, as to the number of students who mentioned R O T C?
I don't, I, unfortunately, I don't have that data and I could. Oh, in the, in the comment. Oh, um, I would probably say.
Like over fifteen?
Over, yeah, I would say between fifteen and thirty, anywhere, anywhere between there. Yeah, um, and the last one I decided to include, uh, because I found this, um, as like, I found this to be a really great idea. Um, it's about a late bus and I know that a lot of students, probably over, um, definitely over half of the students at Hemden Academy rely, oh, my phone didn't die or didn't black out, but, well, anyways, I'll keep talking about this. Um, I know that, uh, over fifty percent of students at H A rely on others for transportation and that can really, um, limit what students can do in terms of extracurriculars and getting help from teachers, uh, which is very important. And I remember, um, in middle school, at Reeds Brook, there was a late bus that came from the elementary schools an hour after the school day got over for students at Reeds Brook. And that allowed, um, students to get extra help, to participate in clubs and it was a really useful, um, mode of transportation. And, um, so somebody brought that up in the additional comments and I thought, you know, sometimes I don't think about this as a senior who's been, I've been driving for a while and, um, I remember what it was like, um, having parents who work, um, until five and I, I can't get a ride and I, I can't do certain things and I know what that feels like. And I thought that was something that we should, um, look into, maybe possibly getting a late bus for H A that could transport students, um, even if they, um, were staying after for just an hour or, um, or two, something like that. Uh, so I thought I'd bring that up. And that about sums up the additional, thank you. That about sums up the additional comments. And that is it. So thank you for hearing this presentation. Thank you. And I, I'd like to open it up if anybody has any questions or comments about this survey.
I think I have one question, it's really based on last year's survey. There was a comment made, and I think it was only made by one person, but it really bothered me. Um, and this person said, "I'm gonna go ahead and fill this out, but I don't expect anything to change because nothing ever does." So did you have any of that kind of sense of frustration that we keep being asked and nothing changes?
I think I saw like one, but it wasn't worded as negatively as that one, no.
I, I don't recall reading a comment, um, such as that. I did read through all of them, I, I was very interested in that. And if, uh, people would like to receive a spreadsheet of every single response, I could send that out to, um, anybody who's interested in receiving that, um, of this year's survey. I think Lucas, uh, did that last year for a few people.
That's where I saw it. So your sense is that it's a much more, let's see, that, that the students who responded, it seems from what you said, felt as though, um, what they had to say would be heard, um, and there is an expectation that their voices will make a difference, I guess is what I'm saying. Is that, is your sense from the survey that that's true?
There was a general sense of like, "Thank you for these surveys, we appreciate this," which was positive, and I liked that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I haven't seen any of those like negative comments. A lot of them were complimenting the survey or like, give, like, "Thank you, like, these are so many good ideas" and stuff like that, so yeah.
I would like to say that, uh, some of the students don't quite take it seriously, so you have to, you know, look at those and, and take those with a grain of salt, but, um, amongst the students who did take it seriously, I did, I did not sense that negativity. So, yeah. Anything else? Yep.
One suggestion is you can still keep the, um, survey anonymous, but ask what class they're in.
Yeah.
Again, that would be a way to break it up.
Yeah, that's what I was planning for next year. I'm trying to take notes on this survey and see if I can do better next year when I send mine out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice job, very good information.
Thank you.
What will happen with the survey now, Bill? Will we take that back and take some of that into consideration?
Absolutely. We actually, some of the themes of our meetings with Reagan have been around some of that, so, uh, actually those, the feedback especially around what we are not offering, but also the feedback that seventy-seven percent of our students are getting what they want, that, that's pretty awesome, but that means we're, you know, there's a percent that we still wanna work around. So when we're looking at changing programming or we're seeing course offerings that students aren't subscribing to as much, that's when we'll start to make that shift and see, so I think there's more budget.
I found it pretty interesting that anybody that's been around young adults understands that they don't have a, an idea of how to budget, and that these high school students realize that and want to be reaching out.
Well, we've been, we've been teasing them a little bit with that, the advisory activities, especially for our seniors, there's a lot of stuff, we've had them come in and talk about insurance and car insurance and renting and stuff like that, but we, that's been a model we've moved to over the last two years, and only been for our seniors, so I can understand why some of that would come back as, "Oh, we really want this," but, yeah, I'm, I'm really getting the sense that it's just not enough, we need more of it.
What's the hurdle for, uh, having a branch of the military here?
What's the hurdle?
Yeah, do we, I mean, is there a protocol, or have we never had a branch express interest in being here? I mean, has Hampton ever had-
For ROTC?
Yeah.
We actually talked a minute about budget last night, that, uh, you know, usually a club needs to simmer for a while until it gets approved for funding, but usually the ROTC programs come with funding provided through an outside source, so it's not a funding limitation, it's usually interest. And what I'm hearing is a number that mirrors any size program I've-
Bill, do you know how that works as far as how do you incubate that?
So I'm, I'm in conversation right now with three area schools that have it, and also an individual who's reached out to me who's interested in potentially providing it to us. There is a, there's a process of application and stuff that I didn't realize how long it was, but we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. But, um, yeah, essentially, I know in, in another local school, they had to have at least ten percent of the population involved.
Wow, that's a big number.
That's what I, that's what I said too, but I don't know if that was school-related and they said, "Well, we're not gonna run this, it's not viable unless we have ten percent of our population involved," to, to mean that we would have a whole person involved. Um, but I don't, I don't know if that was school-related or if that was military.
What school, Herman has that, is that correct?
Herman has it, Brewer was the one that I, I talked to about.
Okay.
It really is so dependent on the person.
Yes.
Which is, if the person's fantastic, that program grows and, and builds, that person is not so great and doesn't build those relationships, I think it-
Does Bucksport have it?
Did not.
Yeah, I know Newport has it and it's exploded, I know, uh, their kids, cousin, or their cousins joined in and they're doing all sorts of challenges on the programs that I never really thought of being as part of ROTC that's-
Yeah, I, I'm actively pursuing it right now to see what, what it can do.
Well, I, I, I think that some high school students are beginning to realize that the military is one possibility to, uh, to pay for college.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Uh, discuss and act a, a monthly schedule of board meetings, this was, uh, Tony brought this.
We've, we've canceled as many as we've had, and every time we cancel a school board meeting, I mean, we've canceled three or four, and we've only had three extra, four extra, literally we've canceled half of them. And every time we cancel, we convenience everybody at this table and anybody that was planning to come to talk. Whenever we've had an extra meeting where we've had to schedule a second meeting, when we were only doing one, we never cancel. We never canceled our board meetings except for storms when we were just one a month, but we've canceled multiple second meetings.
Yeah, so I know we set up the extra meeting to, to avoid meeting, special meetings, but it's almost like the importance inverted in, we're failing due to lack of tenants or lack of topic.
The very first one got canceled because nobody showed up. You had it and then nobody showed up.
So I sent an email to Karen and Heath expressing my frustration with the two meetings a month, primarily because I don't, in my mind, this was in my mind, how that second meeting would set us up for some in-depth discussion is not happening. Um, and so I really do think it, it makes the extra work for her. Um, it's, and I personally think it's a waste of, at least of my time, because we can take care of what we take care of in two meetings, in one meeting we've done it all along. So unless we're gonna radically change what we do in that second meeting, I'm all for going back to one meeting a month.
So I'd like to make a motion that as of July, uh, this summer, we return one meeting a month.
I'll second it.
Discussion? I'd just like to say that I agree, we probably haven't done, uh, the best job of, of filling these agendas with, um, information. But as a board member, when I first got on the board, we were really doing a good job. We had a, had that second board meeting wanted. I think we were educating board members way better than we are now. Uh, so that's kind of what I was hoping we, we would have, and like I said, we've probably dropped the ball on that. But what, where I would kinda like to see it go, and maybe Reagan could chime in, is we're gonna be in a major transition here in the next six months, and maybe Reagan's got some ideas coming forth that will help us fill that second board meeting, um, a little bit better than we are right now, but I don't know if you've got any comment on that.
Well, I do think that education for the board members and also having the ability to give us a chance to give you more in-depth participation around advising topics in the district would be really important. And so, uh, I guess what I'd say to you is I can see a time and a place for a second meeting a month, but maybe it's not every month. Maybe we think about how we could do things either by theme or category and make sure we have good presentations, because our schools have things to bring to you also, and I know you really enjoy when we have the students come specially and, and teach you about what they are experiencing. So we need time for that. And then again, I think the whole notion of participation from the board's critical as well, and I think that's something we could develop. And maybe you start with orderly commitment to that rather than every single month, or we start very strong by doing it every month, get a good pattern, and then ease off.
I think, and maybe there's some middle ground to that. I, I actually received a, uh, commendation of the whole board tonight that the, one of the citizens had thanked for our, thanked us for our, our hard work, they saw change occurring, they also said they watched every meeting, uh, and they felt that there was meaningful change and that we discussed a lot, and they gleaned a lot from those meetings. So to go to something that's concise and, uh, say consent agenda-driven would, you 'd have to read every single document that backs it up. One thing we've done at other committees is, uh, like a roundtable, just the highlights, where instead of reading out the reports, there's a consent agenda. However, as board members that are thoroughly familiar with the topic, we can raise maybe one or two or three of the highlights of each of those elements. Sometimes it's generating discussion, and if you're not on the board, I would think that, those would be the things that, excuse me, populate to the top, that we want the public to really be aware of. Some of the others are more, you know, business as usual, mundane, and to, to take all the time covering those, I think it does get to the point where we're, we are taken away from having more in-depth. So there may be a way to compress or speed up our, if we went to one, once a month, not to take away from the reporting, but more of a highlight, and then have more time for the focus that we intended to have in the second meeting, maybe have our tape needed too. And then, you know, if we need more time, we can always schedule the second meeting, but right now we don't have time really to schedule those follow-up meetings because they're already pre-scheduled. And I agree with Tony, it can be disruptive, particularly if you're planning family trips or plans around some of those, if you're trying to be at every single meeting, and it, it's really kind of a punch in the nose when it's canceled, and that would have been a preferred week, but you, you worked around it, so it does cause some disruption.
If you don't see, we talked about eliminating, I thought, the committee report us, 'cause all the information is online, and if you did have a question, because all we're really doing is regurgitating really what's in the minutes.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we get those online. I know that's something that Karen has discussed.
I mean, those take a long time, so if we can, we must get rid of those, those questions.
John?
Well, I'm curious, if, if we do go to one meeting a month, a, 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 a definite commitment to one meeting a month with an occasional second, what day would it occur? Anybody have any inspiration on that?
You mean the one meeting?
Yeah.
It'd been the first, the first Wednesday.
The first month.
Historically, definitely would be switched, but it won't be, it's gonna work.
You know, I think as far as your second meeting, I, my understanding is that your goal was to have a certain focus for the second meeting. And I think it would be wise for us to make a list of what would we want to see happen in that second meeting. I mean, to have a priority list that says, okay, one time we wanna have students coming, another time we want to have data reports, or another time we want to look at the strategic plan, which is gonna have to be redone. I think if it becomes very focused in that format, then some of that can be weaved into that one meeting a month, but some special ones, not every month perhaps, but some special ones that are designated where administrators know what's gonna happen in the month of March, we know what's gonna happen in the month of March, this is the topic. Because there are certain themes that should be discussed. I mean, student progress is certainly a theme, and you can't do that as part of this meeting and still be done at nine o'clock. Um, the strategic plan, I mean, we know we need to focus on that with the new one, and maybe that needs to be a special meeting. So I'm not opposed to going to one meeting a month, but then knowing that we have so many special meetings, because we need to cover strategic plan, student data, I don't know what else, but, you know, and it, it would be wise for us as a team to say, "What do you want? You know, what is it you want to know more about?" And then generate a list, and then from that list determine how many extra meetings we'll probably need, and focus on one topic alone at that special meeting. That's my opinion.
To follow up on things, suggestion, we are representatives that are elected, if we all threw, uh, ideas or, or if, if there was a known list of topics that we're generating, we could all stack rank them, it would allow us to prioritize that, and maybe we only do the top fifty percent, and, because that's the, 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 the meetings, but it would allow us really to know it's a special meeting, that is the, the express purpose. And I know we might throw in that order of business that needs our vote, if, if timing is critical, but it seems like it's really, it has been repetitive or continuation of the month. But that's, that's a great idea. I think making sure we're prioritized and hitting the hot topics first would help us focus and then-
Right, and I think, I think everyone, I'm gonna speak for myself, I got on, on the board with an agenda in mind naturally, and I don't know if the rest of you did or not, but I did. Um, and so I think we all have our priorities, but I don't think we've ever expressed what our priorities are. And therefore, if you come up with the priorities and then, like you said, rank file them and say, "Okay, out of, you know, the nine months out of the year, we need four of them," and maybe we can discuss two at a time, if there are that many times, but that's, that's just, I don't know, to me that makes sense, but.
So if we were to go with one meeting, we decided on that tonight, would we be starting at?
July, my motion is for July.
Okay, so the first meeting, first meeting.
It gives us a chance to prepare for it, maybe.
That's what I was gonna say, I would give a chance for the new chair and new superintendent to maybe revamp this whole agenda, we don't have to follow the same agenda.
And I'm wondering if it should be tabled for now, like this, but if it would be tabled for now, and then let's generate this list of what we want to see happen before we make a decision, that, yeah, we only go to once a month, because all of a sudden, we may all of a sudden say, "Holy Toledo, there's a whole lot we're not covering and we probably should be."
I'm afraid if we table it, we won't act on it.
You think so?
Yeah. I think this will force, force action, actually.
Are you implying that, that Tony won't bring it up again?
Oh, I'm pretty-
Yeah.
I'll give a couple of months, and next time we cancel a meeting, which will happen, I'll be like, you know.
Is that okay with school calendar again?
I wanna, I wanna have a special meeting on school calendar.
Motion to adjourn is my thing, but back to one meeting a month, I think, it was nice, Karen gets us out of here, no, the last couple of meetings, like, super early, like, wow, and I'm like, you know what, I'm already here, I'll stay another forty-five minutes, I don't wanna come back two weeks later to, anyway, that's just, that's why I made the motion.
Before, I think we had, um, we had to have a second meeting when we had strategic plan, and we had special meeting then, and it worked out well, scheduled well ahead, everybody knew.
And we never canceled.
No, it was great.
That's right.
Yeah.
John?
Well, um, I, I think that the proposals to table this, especially since we know that it would, it would be brought up in the future, makes a lot of sense. That's just my two cents. So you could make it a amendment?
There's a motion on the floor, so we have a vote on the table, and if that helps, we have to vote, or-
You can amend the motion, go on.
Or you can amend it.
I'm not amending my motion.
He's not gonna amend.
You came with a mission.
Are you making a motion, John?
You're making a motion to table, I heard it, I heard that. Well, I heard a suggestion.
No, I just-
That was a suggestion or a motion? You have to vote on that, and if it gets voted down, then I can amend it to table it, or I can promise I'll bring it up next meeting.
So there's been two suggestions, not a motion, so I think-
I made the motion.
He made the motion.
No, there were two, two suggestions to table, but they weren't actually motions.
Yes. Olivia, do you have a question?
Uh, I just have a comment. Um, so I haven't really been here for too long, so I'm not exactly sure how to just, like, how the meeting's supposed to be separated, but personally, so far this year, I felt that when we've had two meetings per month, we got out a lot earlier, which some people like and people don't like, but for me personally, as a student, it's a Wednesday right now, and, um, it's like eight-thirty, which is like, I, I don't go to, I go to bed pretty early, to be fair, and I think as a student, um, for the representatives at least, it was much more beneficial to have it twice a month, 'cause we were able to communicate with you guys more frequently, we were able to understand what's going on more frequently, and we were able to get home and do our homework and complete assignments on time and get a good night's rest for the next day. That's just my opinion.
I think if we amend the agenda though, and, and add some things, like the supplement report, that's gonna be a huge-
We can address that, 'cause we also would like to get home before, yeah, to help our students.
So the motion on the floor is to go back to the one meeting a month starting in July.
So it's not your first meeting of July. And your motion was to have that one meeting the first Wednesday?
Sure. So I'm raising my hand.
All those in favor?
They're a lot a week, yeah.
I'm saying, Ellen and I are two people-
John, you're saying?
No, I was gonna say too.
So, you abstaining?
Oh, no, I-
You were opposed, so it's four. We have Heath, Wes, Alan, I, opposed, and John abstaining.
So, did the students vote? I know it's an advisory vote, but I really would like them.
Who are two ladies? Sarah?
I could go either way, and I'm not gonna be here next year.
Well, yeah, no, that, that was, that was foregone because we have- Well, then I can amend it if it's gonna be another vote. I mean, we've had extra budget meetings. When we have budget, we have extra meetings. This isn't saying we can't have it. I'm saying instead of having the standard protocol once, twice a month, I just wanna start at one and then add right every week.
Let's see how this adds up first.
So, you, you can go ahead and the next one. I'll do the- Okay, John? Mr. Chairman, is it too late to change my vote? No, I'm serious. Yes. Was it too late for John to change? It probably is. Yeah, he's abstaining. Yeah. So, you go ahead and the next one. It carried, didn't it? Hold on. I'm pretty sure it passed, but I think you-
Wait, do it, I mean, let's, they're still adding it up?
They're gonna tally that. We're gonna go on to the next. Okay, so, enrollment projection study proposal. That's an exhibit.
Yes, you had this in your packet from the prior board meeting that can't-
So, we are, are interested in moving forward with this enrollment study. And the reason for this and why I'm bringing it to you is this is not something that we had budgeted to do this year. But because we are continuing to get more information that there are plans for subdivisions being built, especially in Hamden, I'd like to get out on this early so we can start doing some planning, especially for the building committee going into a McGraw-Wetherby project discussion. So, the proposal does have a cost to it that you've all reviewed. I would recommend that we go for the complete study because it's very thorough and it'll get us the best information. And that's a cost of $5,310. We do have funding that we can turn to in Article Six to move on this. And so, I just wanted to bring it to the committee for you to have the information and certainly to weigh in. But also to simply know our communities are going to be growing in seats, although we need to verify it and we'll find out when. So, do you need a motion? I actually don't need a vote for it, but if anyone has a question or would have concern about us moving on this a year early, we'll get it underway.
Okay, Heath, the tally was 511, yes? 291, no? 69, abstained. 511, 291, 69. So, it is passed, it's passed. The chair, the agreement will get together. Yes. Look at the agenda, try to simplify what we need.
I also think we should, you know, express our gratitude to the administrators. They're here from sunup to sundown and then when we're here, they're here too.
John, just so you know, the regulations articulate your format, so all you- Your one step ahead.
I started packing. That'll be a problem.
We're also- I think we're also, the last case is that committee, I don't see any athletic committee, don't- Uh, we do have one, the prior to our group meeting. Athletic? Is it the first of the- Okay, athletic, okay.
Behavioral review, Alan, Sarah, and the 19th of the 26th, work for you Thursday. I'm especially interested in, in you coming, Sarah, because of the feedback you got about discipline.
What's the date on that, Maria?
The Thursday, the 19th and 26th.
Oh, 26th. And those would be-
We'll see the next one.
Could we move it, I, I, R and B after school on Thursday?
Yeah, so what time?
Well, could it be another day or does it have to be a Thursday?
No, it doesn't have to be Thursday.
Any other day.
What would work for you, Alan? Yep. Friday the 27th, really? Okay.
What time?
Two o'clock.
Okay. Anytime?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. We need a motion to enter executive session. I make a motion to enter executive session, discuss a personnel matter according to MRSA Subsection 40568.
Second. Call the paper.